I got it. Okay, we're going to go ahead and get started here on this October 17th here in the Oaxaca County Government Center for the County Board of Supervisors meeting here in San Luis Obispo County. I please ask you to rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd also ask you to join me in a moment of silence today for the victims of the Hamas terrorist attack on Israel this last week. And Mr. Eric Greening?
Thank you. I'm Eric Greening, returning to the theme of medical arrogance and force. I'm not sure what role the supervisors can play relative to the coercion imposed on healthcare workers to take dangerous experimental spike protein dispensing substances, but please do what you can to ameliorate it. You and the taxpayers could be held liable for dire outcomes that might be experienced by workers if they are injured by substances taken under duress, and this mandate could strain relations with some of our county employees. Visit the React 19 website to see over 3,500 studies documenting significant harm. Although the mandate allows the vaccine to be sidestepped by constant masking, just imagine laboring through a physically and emotionally and mentally exhausting 12-hour nursing shift wearing a mask. This choice actually constitutes pressure, which violates the Nuremberg Code. Let me quote from this document, quote, "The voluntary consent of the human subject is absolutely essential. That means that the person involved should be so situated as to be able to exercise free power of choice without the intervention of any element of force, fraud, deceit, duress, overreaching, or any other form of constraint or coercion, and should have sufficient knowledge and comprehension as to enable an understanding and enlightened decision," unquote. The Nuremberg Code was a critical advance in global human rights, achieved through the shed blood of tens of millions of soldiers and civilians who were killed in the most lethal war of the 20th century. I implore you not to cast it aside, not to allow it to be forgotten or cast aside. Indeed, it should be added, complete and verbatim, to our county code and the state health and safety code so that it can have the force, the power of enforceable law. Thank you.
There's no applause. I'm sorry, but if you applaud, we're going to have to take a half-hour break, and I think we don't want to do that, so please, no applause. Up is Gary Lyra, followed by Lisa Majors.
Members of the board, thank you for the opportunity to speak. When two or three misguided individuals on the bridge in Templeton, where I live, by the way, display white pride signs, the board is quick to make a proclamation against hate. But when Jews face the worst slaughter since the Holocaust, and there's been requests made, and I hope this is wrong, but I don't see an item today asking for a proclamation in support of Israel and condemning Hamas for their genocidal actions in the Middle East. I don't see that, and I know there were requests made, and I hope I'm wrong about that. Let me tell you something. Since you guys are so concerned about hate, I've also heard that antisemitic literature has been distributed in Paso Robles and maybe other places, and there has been actual sympathy shown for Hamas at Cal Poly. I received a call from a South County resident, a resident from San Luis Obispo about this, who was very upset. So where's the outrage against this behavior in the Middle East? And I've talked to people who live in the Middle East, and Adnan, who owned Jaffa Cafe, was an Arab who lived in Israel and told me how fair the Jews were towards the Arabs. You know, frankly, I would have thought, since the board is so concerned about hate, that we would have seen something very quickly to condemn the worst action against the Jews since World War II. The failure to quickly support Israel, San Luis Obispo County Jews, and push back against a murderous, genocidal organization like Hamas, which has supporters apparently in this county, is extremely wrong in light of the fact that you guys were so willing to condemn, you know, three irrelevant people on a bridge in Templeton where I live. I would respectfully ask that an agenda item be made to vote on a proclamation to support Israel, San Luis Obispo County Jews, and condemn an obviously genocidal organization that has killed people randomly and indiscriminately in the Middle East. This is just decency, humanitarian, and sympathy. I'm running out of time here, and I would like to say that the Nuremberg Code was written, I think specifically about the handling of Jews during World War II and the forced medical experiments that they had to take, and this is tied together. And I would like to note that I have two relatives who had severe reactions to the vaccination. This should be totally, totally voluntary, and I see these two things tied. This progressive ideology has to recognize that Hamas is a homicidal, murderous, genocidal organization, and people have the right to be free from genocide and forced vaccinations. Thank you very much.
Lisa Majors, followed by Linda Quinlan.
Thank you for this opportunity. For the record, border security is national and local security. There are some who are deeply committed to do us harm. Our unsecured border and historic immigrant crisis has overwhelmed our Border Patrol agents. Border crisis brings us gangs locally here, cartels locally here, and coyotes, drug here, fentanyl, labor, sex trafficking, and leaves us all vulnerable to terrorists, with the 7.6 million coming over our border and the unknown number of gotaways. Finally, our own FBI, Christopher Wray, has grave concerns right now with the increased threat and border crossing of terrorists into our nation. The Department of Homeland Security has acknowledged this potential risk as a threat of a lone wolf Hamas-style terror attacks in our own southern border hometowns and beyond, as we have seen in the past. In 2023, watch lists reported 150-plus terror encounters. These are military-age men coming into the U.S. through our ports and entry. They are special interest aliens and pose national security threat to the U.S. I call out a concern for our safe and secure communities. What will our community do? Are we prepared? Where is our voice? There is a lack of community trust in this multi-layered border security effort. As we see, this is not effective nationally and locally. We have cartel here, fentanyl, sex trafficking, labor trafficking, flooding in the last 2.5 years as record numbers. Now, we have terrorism further. Do you know if we have a plan for community response team training regarding these threats? Generationally, my own family has been victims to those who want to do us harm, from genocide, rape, death march in World War II, to my dad's rape in Passaic, New Jersey, my sibling being sex trafficked by a gang, to my own assault at a gang by a gang at a Halloween festival fundraiser. My family has known personally terror and trauma. I am now a crisis chaplain, dedicated to trauma abuse survivor restoration. I am overloaded, all right, right now with work. I don't need more. We need to do, come together as a community to be safe and secure here. Raping, pillaging, murdering, trafficking, assaults have been quietly discussed and hidden for a long time, but now it's a hard reality for we all have to face this. As a slow county community, are we educated? Are we paired with rehearsed safety plans to preserve national security here locally? We need a secure, we need to secure our local coastal communities and our borders now for our family, our children, our most vulnerable. Thank you.
Linda Quinlan will be followed by Joe Rulo.
Linda Quinlan, New California State Chair, San Luis Obispo County. Good morning, Mr. Chair, members of the board. When I heard that Penny Bornstein had issued another order, we started to hear rumblings within the community about what was, what people were feeling and sensing. So we decided to put out a survey. Within 48 hours, we had over 600 responses. As of this morning, we're over 800 responses. The survey that I'm going to present today is based on 665 responses. Dr. Penny Bornstein, Public Health Director, has issued an order requiring that all healthcare workers in Slow County be vaccinated against flu, COVID-19, or be required to wear masks. While there has been an order for about 10 years regarding the flu vaccine, we are trying to confirm that the previous order only applied to hospitals and not all healthcare facilities. We have yet to get confirmation from the Public Health Director on that question. We'd like to hear from you about this and other general questions regarding public health. Thank you for your participation. Question number one: Are you aware that Dr. Penny Bornstein, Slow Public Health Director, recently issued an order for all healthcare workers to be vaccinated against the flu and COVID during the cold flu season, or they must wear a mask? Yes, 390 people, 59.82%. No, 262 or 40.18%. Are you in favor of this mandate? Yes, 241 or 3.61% of those who responded. 638 or 95.94% said no. Are you in favor of any medical mandate? Yes, 11 people responded at 1.66%, and 529 or 79.91% said no. 124 or 18.73% said it depends. Regarding California Civil Code Title 978421 involving the right to informed consent, the federal and state government use COVID as a healthy emergency, health emergency to waive our right to consent. And again, it's 93.61%. Do you feel your constitutional rights are being violated? 93.61%. I know I'm running out of time, but your, your community is speaking. They will not stand for this. They will not conform. They will not consent. And my last statement is, I'm wearing a Star of David given to me by my grandmother when I was 18 years old, and I support Israel, and I hope you do too. Thank you.
Joe Rulo, followed by Shirley Blanton Valenti.
Mr. Chairman and board members, the majority of San Luis Obispo County residents don't want to expand the sale of marijuana to include dispensaries in the unincorporated area. Marijuana, with the exception of limited medical use, is a dangerous substance and is illegal at the federal level. It's a gateway to hard drugs. While all marijuana users don't end up using hard drugs, almost all hard drug users say they started on marijuana. This is an undeniable fact and has been true for decades. My experience dealing with marijuana users began 54 years ago as a naval officer, where I prepared many administrative discharges on sailors using the drug. My 27 years in federal law enforcement as a special agent with the IRS Criminal Division involved cases on many drug dealers. I think I know what I'm talking about. Many businesses fail every year because they sell a product with insufficient demand to generate enough sales to cover the cost of doing business. Why should we help marijuana dealers stay in business and make a profit selling a dangerous drug when we don't help other retailers? It makes no sense. A few months ago, Mr. Pauling and other liberal board members were looking to increase taxes on all county residents. The board is now proposing a 25% reduction in the tax on retail marijuana dealers, up to $1 million in subsidies, easing regulations, and spreading marijuana sales to the unincorporated county area. Board has just done a complete flip when it comes to taxes, but only for marijuana dealers. Why is the majority on this board so concerned, pardon me, about excess regulations and costs on failing marijuana dealers that are selling a dangerous drug? Why is it not concerned for excess regulations, unnecessary delays, and costs for other businesses, or even for citizens just trying to build a home? The answer is simple. Apparently, the liberal board, the liberal majority on the board is more interested in helping drug dealers than they are in helping the average, hard-working citizens. The current board majority voted in favor to weaken Proposition 13 protections for taxpayers, as opposed to maintaining Proposition 13 safeguards. If you think marijuana is not harmful, provide it to your airline pilot on your next flight or your surgeon before your next operation. What the board is proposing is simply a stupid idea, a dangerous idea, and an expensive waste of taxpayer money. Wake up, board members and wake up citizens. Don't let the board get away with this. And I want to say that I concur with Mr. Kirkland and Mr. Green on their comments. Thank you.
Shirley Blanton Valenti will be up next, followed by Congresswoman Andrea Seestran.
Hello. My name's Shirley Blanton Valenti, and I'm here to speak specifically of the mandates that have been suggested by the Public Health Director regarding mandated flu vaccines and COVID shots. And if healthcare workers do not comply, they will be forced to wear a mask, and they are being forced to become vaccinated. I am a nurse, and I currently work in the ICU here in a local hospital. Three years ago, in 2020, we were forced to become vaccinated, or we were told we would lose a job. We did not have much understanding of what COVID was. It was an attempt to fear monger, I believe. And, you know, we had not much understanding of what COVID was, and we only heard what was being put out in the news. And we were told that there were comorbidity issues such as diabetes, heart disease, renal failure, obesity, that would impact those who got COVID. So many people who worked in healthcare did receive the COVID vaccine, much to their disagreeing of what it was being used for. And I was sent down to a busy ICU where I had to gown up and wear masks, et cetera, and it was a very frightening time. And so I didn't know if I was going to die from COVID or if I was going to possibly die from, you know, be receiving a vaccine. I think choice is important, and I think that we should be allowed to make a choice to either get a vaccination or not. And also, in speaking for the mask mandates, if you do not get vaccinated, I disagree with that. Being at the bedside for 12 hours, like someone suggested, you cannot breathe well, you get headaches, you feel like you have brain fog. How can we take care of our patients for 12 hours and use good judgment when we can't think straight? And so we were allowed breaks if we got them in a 12-hour shift. I know that you are supposed to take breaks, but many times we did not get breaks. And so we had opportunity to go to the bathroom, take our mask off, get a drink of water, eat very little, and get back to the bedside. And having many patients, I had, over the course of a 12-hour shift, five patients, and I would give them, the critical ones, they could possibly die, they were on ventilators, on remdesivir, which was proven not to be so good, and where ivermectin was also a choice, as listed on the CDC website, as a possible alternative. And so currently, where we stand now is the rate of COVID has decreased. We are not seeing as many COVID patients in our hospitals. I'm currently still working in ICU. They're not being all put on ventilators. We use a high-flow oxygen, and many of those patients and their conditions are turned around by not being on ventilators and remdesivir, which could have caused many of the problems we were seeing. And so I would encourage the Public Health Department in the San Luis Obispo County not to force these mandated vaccinations and also the mask, because it is detrimental. And how often do we get to see facial expression when we take care of patients? I think it's so important, and I would just encourage that we would not go backwards, that we would continue to go forward, and I feel that pro-choice should be allowed. Thank you.
Andrea Seestran will be followed by Marleah.
Good morning, Andrea Seestran. I'm a resident of San Luis Obispo County and the state of California. I am a citizen of the great republic of the United States of America. I am a Catholic. I am a pro-lifer, and I am a staunch opponent of totalitarian authoritarian governments. And I am a great supporter of the state of Israel and all Jews throughout the world. I am here today requesting this County Board of Supervisors support a resolution in strong support of Israel and opposing the extermination of Jews. Just look around our nation this past weekend. I couldn't believe what I saw happening in New York City, San Francisco, and the many campuses such as Harvard and Columbia, calling for the killing of Jews. Unbelievable. I am crying for the thousands of our men and women who fought and died in World War II to eliminate, eliminate a totalitarian government, Nazism. They gave their lives, and today, we see neo-Nazis in our streets of America calling for the killings of Jews. It's surreal. Just this past weekend, Christopher Wray, head of the FBI, warned all of us regarding domestic terrorist attacks here in our United States of America. The terrorists consider America the great Satan. Not surprised, due to the neo-Nazism indoctrination of students in the Harvards and Colombias and other universities, they were out in the street calling for the killing of Jews. But most importantly, I want to emphasize the open borders today, both north and south, and especially our southern border, with thousands coming every day and being placed on buses, trains, and planes, traveling to all parts of this land, and we don't know who they are. And I might add, including our state of California, a sanctuary state. Previously, on two occasions, I requested that this board take a position opposing the designation of this state, including this county, being a sanctuary state. Unfortunately, the motion regarding this request failed on a 3 to 2 vote. Thank you Supervisor John Pashon and Supervisor Debbie Arnold for your support. Supervisor Bruce Gibson, Donna Ortiz-Legue, and Jimmy Paulding voted against the motion, and I take it for a sanctuary state. And so today is another day, and I'm here standing, asking that you support Israel and all Jews throughout the world, and right here, the Jews in our county of San Luis Obispo. You know, there's that old saying in Germany, they said, "Well, you know, they came for this group, and they came for the Christians, and they came for the Jews, and there was no one to support me when they came for me." May God have mercy on all of us. Thank you.
Marleah, followed by Diane Greenaway.
Good morning, board members. I had some prepared remarks, but it, I feel like everybody's already spoken to the issue I was going to talk about, and it has to do with the mask mandates and the order from Dr. Penny Bornstein, who's sitting behind me. And apparently, a California code that has allowed her to make this order, it's a pretty simple code, so I encourage everybody to, to look at it. It's California Health and Safety Code 120175. And all it really says is she has, it's her duty to prevent the spread of a contagion, which sounds reasonable on its surface, but is COVID a contagion? I know it's a toxin, and we have to be solving the right problem. Putting a mask on, like the nurse said, actually, she's getting headaches because it inhibits your oxygen. It drops it down below 21%, which is against OSHA regulation. So we're violating other codes by insisting people wear a mask. Another thing, the vaccines, nobody, they're not, they don't work. They're jabs, they're bioweapons, they have nanotechnology in it. Nanotech means it's a nanometer, and that goes right through a mask. So it's not stopping anything. All it's doing is inhibiting your oxygen flow and increasing your CO2 intake, because you can't exhale it. But really, this has all been stated, so what is the board going to do about it? Are they going to allow her to make this order for hospitals and all healthcare workers in our county? Because I know that they're not going to stop there. They're, they're going to release another plandemic, and then we're all going to be on lockdown again. And I want to know what the board intends to do. It'd be great if you'd be willing to state that by the end of these public comments, because almost everybody in here has been getting up to speak about it, and it's not okay. We need to go back to American principles. Thank you.
Diane Greenaway, followed by Sheri Nelson.
Good morning, Supervisor staff and the many watching this meeting today. Before I go into my remarks, many of which have, have been stated, I have some other questions as well, but I do want to thank the supervisors for their support for our local festivals. And so I want to thank the supervisors for, for supporting a task at our Colony Days. We appreciate it. It goes a long way toward helping us do that, so thank you very much for that. But today I come with, as others, with a strong concern regarding this fresh mandate from Dr. Bornstein last month, ordering healthcare workers to be updated, as, as has been said. I wanted to say that I, I'm not, I'm not a health worker, but I have helped take care of people, my mom-in-law and others, and I witnessed wearers of masks nearly pass out. And according to the NIH website, rebreathing carbon dioxide produces a host of symptoms, including, as has been said, dizziness, fatigue, and brain fog. It can also cause headaches, increased blood pressure, rapid breathing, or shortness of breath. As to vaccine safety, I've already shared with this board of multiple incidents of persons in our neighborhood, okay, I live in a senior park, dying suddenly in their sleep. This was in a kind of, not too long after the first injections. It was very unusual. I've lived there for a while, and that was unusual. Plus, recently, we had a man just drop dead in his mother's living room. All of these persons had trusted their physicians and taken the vaccine, every single one of them. So it makes a person ask questions. On a related note, we're looking for a new primary physician for a family member, and if we found with some dismay that there's a shortage of doctors in our county. I've seen signs posted in a cardiologist's office that they are short-staffed, and I have to wonder if staff and doctor shortages are related to the vaccination requirement and masking requirements. So I have some questions. One is, to what extent is our county affected by the nationwide shortage of nurses and other healthcare workers? To what extent could this order exacerbate that? And what are the health and safety implications of intensifying such a shortage? What are the implications for worker morale? Also, what liability might befall the county if healthcare workers vaccinated under duress suffer injuries to their shots? And third, to what extent might a leaky, non-sterilizing vaccine prolong rather than suppress a viral outbreak? To what extent might healthcare workers with damaged immune systems create a more hazardous environment for patients and coworkers? We'll be watching for your answer. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Sheri Nelson, followed by Bridget Morse.
Thank you. First of all, I would like to say I appreciate so much Supervisors Pashon, Arnold, and Paulding's attention to the speakers today. I appreciate that very much, rather than looking down at your devices continually, not respecting the speakers. I've been in the health business for 40 years now. I'm a professional in that, in that industry, and I am speaking today on the order of September 21st from Penny Bornstein mandating that all county health workers get the vaccine or wear a mask. I believe that this order is in violation of California Civil Code Title 9-784-29, the right to informed the right to informed consent. There should be no other code or law that overrules this law. Right-to-informed consent law does not say if you say no, you have to comply with other consequences, like wearing a mask, wearing a sticker of your status, or signing a declination that you're not taking it. As per confirmed by administration at a local hospital last week, the last time these workers were mandated to get the shot, it created a shortage of workers in that industry that did not want to comply. So they quit their jobs. This was a noticeable shortage, and I believe that this order is putting our community in grave peril and in danger of creating shortage of these workers. Doctors, nurses, and many other healthcare workers will quit rather than comply. I've known many personally. This decision was made solely by Penny Bornstein, as confirmed by her office to me last week, and was her choice, using some code that was already cited. This is, she on her own chose to do this. As per statement, as her interview with KSBY last week, it just seemed natural to add the COVID-19 vaccine. It just seemed natural. Where are your peer-reviewed studies showing this? It should have been referred to in that order, documenting why there's a reason for this. Did she consult with any hospitals or healthcare workers to assess the need for this? Was this based on the number of deaths in our county? When I called the local hospital as to how many cases are in there, I was told that there was less than a handful of cases. Since she did not take this action last year, what's the difference in this year or last year? What's the difference in numbers? I would like answers to these questions, and I've already emailed these questions directly to Penny Bornstein. How much money has the county spent on COVID-19 vaccine material in the last three years? And I would like to know that by year. How much money, how many of these vaccines were discarded because of non-use? But most people don't realize that the county purchases these vaccines and then puts them out to the public.
Sheri, your time is up, Sheri.
Okay. And one last statement. There's a mental diagnosis, and it has a name. It's called Munchausers by Proxy. It's a mental disorder where people view healthy people as sick, and they need medical
Next up is Bridget Morse, correct? And then Sandra Bohicchio.
And in the risk of beating a dead horse or whatever, I also want to talk to you about this mandate. Because I am an inquisitive person. I always want to know who's behind it, why. And I'm really curious to see who is behind this forcing people like that, you know, us to wear masks and get the shots and everything. Because I hear that the pharmaceutical companies, they have way too much stuff from COVID-19 that they need to use it or they need to throw it away, you know, there's an expiration date. So you have to understand, I'm a nurse, and I have lived through this mandate stuff before. And what it did is that it caused the nurses to be foggy and not be reliable. It's very dangerous for the patients. The patients were okay. I am a procedure nurse, so the patient was okay because we gave them oxygen before, during, and after the procedure. But what about the nurse? I've worked in the rooms where we didn't have enough staff. So when the technician fainted, well, there was nobody else to help. So I had to do my job and her job, too. So I am really concerned for the population that is going to suffer because the nurses couldn't be on top of things, the doctor is getting foggy, too, and the nurse is getting less and less oxygen. So she's a danger then for the patients. You know, I'm really concerned that the population will suffer from this, this mask thing. And also, I want to let you know that it's dangerous for the hospitals, like you said, that having a shortage of nurses and doctors. Because one hospital that, I'm a traveling nurse, one hospital I went to, I am not exaggerating, half the staff had left the hospital. So the hospital was basically staffed with traveling nurses. And when they told me that, I said, you have to be pulling my leg. No. My unit where I went, nobody was one of their employees. We all were traveling people. The nurse, the tech, the respiratory therapist, the anesthesiologist, the whole crew was traveling people. Because that hospital, the nurses left. Well, I didn't have that choice in order to work. Even as a traveling nurse to stay in California, I had to get vaccinated also and wear the darn mask. And I'm an asthmatic, and I'll tell you, it's not easy to function when you have a mask and you're getting foggy, and then you worry, oh, my gosh, what am I going to forget? Or am I going to be on top of it? Am I going to see that something is happening? So I want you to look at it, not just from the citizen, but for the patient.
Thank you.
The risk to the patients.
Thank you. Sandra?
Hi, my name is Sandra Bohicchio, and I have been an ICU nurse for over 21 years. I want to start by stating that I am a strong advocate of vaccines. I received the Pfizer COVID vaccine in December 2020. In the second week it was available. It was the right decision in December 2020, and I still believe that now. I'm giving testimony today to challenge Slow County's director for mandatory full 2023 COVID boosters based on the lack of scientific data and lack of scientific and medical rationale. Any medical intervention we adopt must pass two tests. It must be effective, and it must be safe. A risk-benefit analysis can then be calculated. This has been the medical standard for decades. During the pandemic, the standards were losing in the interest of expediency. But we are no longer in a pandemic. We have time to make more sober and calculated decisions. How do we know if a booster is effective? How do we know if a vaccine is safe? The best way is with randomized controlled trials with clinical endpoints that matter. Surrogate endpoints such as antibody titers are not good enough. The vaccine boosters must show that it decreases the chance that a given person will get the disease, reduce the incidence of serious illness death, or decrease the chance that the person will spread the disease. The population study matters, too. 95% of the American population has had COVID at least once. Does the booster change outcomes in our present population? If we are recommending that a person who has had COVID two, three, four times in vaccinations and was sick with COVID, or more times, get yet another booster, the data needs to show that that person benefits. The current full 2023 booster was approved in September by the FDA based on the following. Moderna and Pfizer tested the antibody responses in a small population. There are no data that the booster provides a net benefit to anyone, and this may be especially doubted for young, healthy people. And those who had COVID, very likely there is net harm to some of these groups, as there was for prior boosters. The full 2023 booster is essentially a widespread medical intervention made with zero data. It is always the responsibility of the scientists, pharmaceutical company, or government agency to show the evidence for the medical intervention they are promoting or especially forcing on people. It is not the responsibility of others to disprove the value of that intervention. Randomized controlled trials are the gold standard. Observational studies don't suffice, as they are prone to bias and thus may lead us to false conclusions. Antibody titers don't suffice, as they tell us nothing about the real-world effectiveness of the vaccine. Historically, we have witnessed that the immunity from COVID vaccination is short-lived. Yes, the vaccine definitely lowered the chance of getting critically ill or dying. But as many of you may have experienced, it doesn't eliminate the chances of getting sick again or spreading it to others. So logically, what is the rationale for mandating healthcare workers receive a booster? When based on historical observations, it will possibly confer immunity for perhaps six weeks? Even this is unproven. And won't prevent transmission to patients or their coworkers after that? If people who refuse the vaccine must wear masks until April 30th, doesn't it also make sense to require masks after six weeks for those who took the booster? No, they won't require it because the mask requirement is punitive. It's meant to punish those who won't comply. The Cochrane Report from earlier this year concluded that in the case of respiratory viruses, for whatever reason, masking simply doesn't work. Dr. Bornstein has heard of that study, but she made the recommendation anyway. Let's consider safety. The risk of myocarditis in young men is not trivial. A paper from the Medical Journal of Circulation, Cirque 2022, I won't cite the numbers, showed that in young males, the risk of myocarditis was higher after the second vaccine dose than after a positive COVID test. A Nordist study of 23 million people found that for young men, ages 16 to 24, post-vaccination rates were six to 28 times higher than myocarditis rates after COVID infection. Jama Cardiology, 2022.
Your time is up.
Can I finish? This is really important.
I'll give you 10 seconds. Go ahead.
Okay. So admittedly, these are rare events, but traveling may be the small risk, but it's not worth the risk, and we shouldn't be punished. So I ask that you ask Dr. Penny Bornstein to rescind this order.
No applause. Nicole Dorfman will be followed by Nancy Shaw.
Hello, good morning. My name is Nicole Dorfman, and I'm from Morro Bay. And I appreciate everything the woman here just said, and a lot of people have said similar things, and I'm going to add a piece to it. I think arguably, the public distrust in public health and in government in general is probably at an all-time low. And I believe that orders such as the one we're talking about only make this problem worse. And they validate distrust in the public health system because this order was not based on science, as we've heard. It was not based on necessity, as we've heard. It seemed like it was just something to do. But we're playing with people's lives, and I think that's really inappropriate and very harmful. I know all of us at some point were forced to wear masks. And myself, my husband's a healthcare provider. He was ready to quit. Luckily, his employer lifted it before he did, but he said he won't do it again. He would quit his job before doing that because it was so painful to not be able to breathe for hours on end. He felt sick, had headaches, was angry coming home. It was a really, really difficult time for my family, as I imagine it was for other people's families as well. A lot of people have spoken about the COVID shot. I'm just going to speak a little bit about the flu shot. I have a copy of this article from Scientific American, which I will send to all of you via email. And it just came out on October 9th. And it's talking about that the CDC is now changing how they are talking about the flu shot. They're basically saying it's no longer a black-and-white issue, whether it will prevent or it won't prevent. It says now they're framing it in a way to be more honest, I quote, and give a nuanced portrayal of the benefits of influenza vaccine, which scientists have long recognized, that it cannot prevent infection. Okay? So this is recognized by the CDC. And again, I'm going to send this all to you. So if the shot cannot prevent infection, it says maybe it's able to prevent severity of symptoms. So that's not preventing infection, it's not preventing transmission, and there are real harms. There's a lot of evidence to show that people who do receive the shot year after year after year, that it has a negative efficacy, meaning you're more likely to get sick. Okay? This is not acceptable, especially when we're talking about our healthcare workers who are essential, our community needs them desperately. So I urge you to please rescind this order. Thank you so much.
Nancy Shaw will be followed by Misty Tardoglia.
Okay. Good morning. I'm Nancy Shaw from Templeton. I worked as an RN for about 30 years in different hospitals and situations, and I've held my license for 38 years now. The public health director for Slow County needs to be relieved of her duties by the Board of Supervisors. We are seeing once again, and it is clear, that this MD is lacking good judgment and critical thinking skills that are necessary for someone in her position. She's in a very important position, and she's making many mistakes. She has chosen to ignore studies given to her on injuries of the COVID injection, numerous calls, letters, protests, and this is a while ago, but in the past, requesting that she stop her medically unsound, unnecessary policies for lockdowns, masks, and genetic injections. Numerous studies show that the mask and COVID injection do not provide any significant benefit and may in fact harm or even kill residents of Slow County. And many of us know people or know of people who are dead now, who have died, who shouldn't have from the COVID vaccine or had harm. We need a health director who uses best practices for the health of the citizens of Slow County, and this includes not only for our physical health, but mental and emotional health and financial health. Think about our businesses for the people of San Luis. Healthcare workers in Slow County must regain their right to choose and their right to weigh risk versus benefit for the treatments that are done to them. No one should be forced, and they deserve the same rights as other citizens and proper informed consent. The right to medical freedom and choice, informed consent, not under duress, is ordained by the Nuremberg Code of Ethics and stated by the California Board of Nursing. How many healthcare workers will leave our, excuse me, county because of her draconian policies? I am thankful that I'm a retired nurse, so I don't have to deal with this horrendous policy. Regarding the supposed safe and effective mantra lie, I can tell you, vaccines are not all safe and effective. And I thought I had lymphoma in 2009 after my flu shot. I had two years of flu shots that did not work. I gave the flu to my youngest daughter. She had to go to the ER. We got, she got diagnosed with H1N1. I, after that, became extremely fatigued. I had fevers off and on for three months, and I started calling in sick to the hospital I worked at, something I almost never did. That is when I started researching, and I like to research. And I did a lot, and what I found out was not good. They do lot-splitting, which can hide patterns of injury with certain lots of vaccines because they get spread out throughout the country. No other medicine, no other drug is lot-split allowed, but the biologics of vaccines are. There was fraud, there was statistical problems with these studies that we've been told for many vaccines, not just COVID, which is not a vaccine.
Thank you.
And I just want to say real quick, if I can, I have, in my family, we have three MDs and three RNs. And they were getting sick, sick, sick. I didn't get the vaccine, the only one.
Thank you.
And I only...
Nancy? Thank you. Okay. We got Misty. Is that right? Okay, Misty, you're up. Mandy Davis will follow you.
Good morning, everyone. Thank you for allowing me to speak. I am a nurse over 21 years, acute care, ambulatory surgery, and home health. I've been, I love being a nurse, speaking from the heart right now. Absolutely love being a nurse. When I take care of patients, I put my heart into it regardless of the circumstances. When the pandemic hit, I chose to go back into the hospital to work alongside my fellow nurses. I put aside my family and my fears to serve. I got through this pandemic before the vaccines rolled out. I was once a hero, but then the tides turned. Nurses were no longer heroes if they chose their informed decision to not take an experimental vaccine or that they had immunity to COVID. Nurses who made this decision are shamed, called out, segregated, and their jobs are threatened. A fair majority of nurses decided to change their profession, and now we have an extreme shortage of nurses. Through all of this, I watched our society, our patients, be deprived of good quality care because of the stigma of COVID and fear-mongering. After three years, it has been determined that masks and the shots are not efficient to stop the spread, prevent you from giving it or getting it. to stop the spread, prevent you from giving it or getting it. I am saddened that the residents in these assisted living facilities in our community are being tortured. And I give you an example. If a resident tests positive, the whole staff and residents do mass testing per the direction of Department of Public Health. We are talking about population of severe dementia, and they are held down to have a four-inch Q-tip shoved in their nose, then placed in isolation behind closed doors with minimal supervision, minimal hydration and nutrition. They are susceptible of falls, pressure injuries, and continuous mental decline from isolation. They are told by the Department of Public Health to isolate 10 days or further if there are symptoms. These assisted living facilities are required to have fully vaccinated, boosted residents, so it cannot be blamed on the unvaxxed. The common denominator in all of these assisted living facilities, and this is, I'm just talking within this last month, is that they had gotten the flu and the COVID booster within two weeks prior to these big outbreaks, and they are all in isolation, locked down. Families can't go in to see them again, all behind closed doors. Lost my spot. With all this said, why again are we targeting unvaccinated and requiring if they don't comply to once again segregate them, mark them, blame them, and make them wear a mask for six months and get vaccinated? I believe our healthcare industry is a way for Department of Public Health to track, trace, and control this population as they turn a blind eye to the big box doors and other aspects they can't control. Please rescind this mandate. I love my job, and I want to keep it. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Mandy Davis will be followed by John Whitworth.
Hi, Mandy Davis from Los Osos. How are you guys this morning? This is, this has got to be long, et cetera. And I really appreciate your being here, and I hope that you're all listening to me. So I just spent the last five days in the Sierras, just winding down, having an incredible time hiking. It was nice and calm when I came home. Walked in this room, and it all dissipated. This is a really, really important issue, and it speaks to an even broader issue of body sovereignty, one of our basic freedoms. And this mandate is absolutely obliterating that freedom. And, you know, I'm just going to be really blunt, because I'm just tired of all of this. This mandate, this vax and mask mandate is fear-based bias, and it's ignorant. And the ignorance is this, we've had several people already mentioned some of the details, but the ignorance to the fact that mask, and there are numerous, and I ask for you to take a look at some of these peer-reviewed articles, about masks and their inefficiency at protecting us from viruses, but not only that, how absolutely dangerous for our personal health they are. As to the vaxes, there is no evidence out there, and even the CDC recognizes this, that if you get that vaccine, that you are no longer going to be able to communicate the disease. It is going to potentially protect you from some of the worst effects, and that's pretty much it. So there is absolutely no reason for this mandate. Like I said, it is fear-based bias. It is ignorant, period. And I'm just tired of it.
John Whitworth. Going once. John Whitworth going twice. Anybody else that would like to speak in public comment for items not on today's agenda? Please get a form in. Dr. Bornstein, you'd like to speak? Please. You're up.
Thank you, Chairman, members of the board. Penny Bornstein, Director of the Public Health Department and County Health Officer. I'm not going to address a lot of what was said today. We can debate the facts all day. I have different information that formed my opinion, and I want to speak to that. So we have had vaccines required in situations, particularly in healthcare, but also school immunization law, for decades. MMR, tetanus, diphtheria, pertussis, polio, hepatitis B, a number of vaccines that have been in place as required, particularly in healthcare settings. Those are rare diseases. They got to be rare because of vaccines. And the influenza vaccine mandate that has been in place from the public health officer has been for 12 years. The healthcare system has rather enjoyed that mandate, for the most part, and not necessarily every individual, but it has been the same type of order, which is either you get the vaccine or you wear a mask during the respiratory season. And I haven't received any feedback from that for 12 years. So when it came to this year, COVID, yes, it's true. I said it seemed like a natural extension. It is the third-leading cause of death. It is much more prevalent than flu. It is a safe and effective vaccine, despite what some will tell you. It has been approved fully by the FDA and studied very extensively. And it just seemed like, given the implications of COVID in our community, that the healthcare worker order would be a natural extension. I think what we're dealing with here is a lot of politicization around COVID in particular, in particular.
Please, no comments.
Because it really is no different than the influenza mandate that has been in place for vaccination or masking for a six-month period. So that's all I'll say. I'm available for questions, and we'll leave it at that.
Thank you. We have one more speaker. We'll come back, this is public comment, so let me finish public comment. Oh, John Whitworth is here. We called you about six times, John. You must have been out duck hunting. And then Amy, you'll be up next.
Sorry for the delay. I was busy outside fighting bad guys. Anyways, I'm here to, does a lot of you folks know that I'm against this potential mandate that, or mandate that Penny Bornstein has inflicted on our healthcare workers? And also to serve a warning, not from me, but from others, that if you try a lockdown of this county again and require everybody to wear a mask, because that's what this is really about, start with a few and go back to, go back to having everybody wear a mask and controlling the sheeple. So I'm against everything that she is trying to do, and it needs to stop. We, the people, are standing up. We are standing up, and you're going to be hearing, this is not a threat, folks. You're going to be hearing from us. And we're not going to stand for a handful of people who care for nothing but themselves to shut down this county or even attempt to. There is a giant movement afoot, and if you don't have your ear to the ground and know what's really happening here, the people have had it. You can only push so hard. So we are here, and please don't take this as a threat, but let's face reality. So I'm going to ask Penny Bornstein to retract this healthcare worker, whatever we want to call it, and let's get some common sense back to our county. Thank you.
No applause. Amy Salas. Salas, you are up. You bet.
Well, as the only person in here with a mask on, I just want to say I support Penny. I'm getting over pneumonia, so I'm just trying not to get something from anybody, possibly. I do support the masks. Every time I go to the doctor, they're always wearing masks. And when I went the last time for this, she asked me to keep my mask on. And I think the masks help, and any healthcare provider should be wearing a mask. Thank you.
Okay. Is there any other public comment on this item? See none. We are going to close public comment and bring it back to the board. I wanted to ask County Council a question here. Obviously, this is not agendized, so we can't have discussions on anything here today. Is that correct?
That's correct. What the Brown Act allows is after public comment, board members can make brief comments in response, but that, otherwise, it is not agendized.
Okay. So we have set up a possibility to be able to talk about other things at the end of each day, but I think with all these people here, they're not going to stick around for six hours. So I'm going to go ahead and just make a couple motions, and we'll take a couple votes and see if we can, the first one would be on Israel. I think I heard there was a number of people in the community that would like to see us do a resolution. So I'd make a motion to do a resolution in support of the State of Israel and denounce the terrorist Hamas attacks on Israel. There's a second.
I'll second that motion.
Okay. We'll go down and see Supervisor Paulding.
Yeah, under discussion on that, I certainly condemn the Hamas terrorist attacks. And I guess, given the fact that that situation is so fluid and that would take, you know, a couple weeks before we would even be able to have a discussion on a resolution, I thought a more appropriate course of action to respond to the comments today would be to direct our public information officer to take individual statements from each board member and issue a press release. That way, we're making clear exactly what our position is and doing that in a time-sensitive manner, because who knows where we'll be in two weeks, and it could be stale, you know, whatever the resolution is that we would pass. So I would ask that my colleagues entertain that as an alternative.
Supervisor Ortiz Legg.
Yes. I certainly entertain that. I think that inflammatory statements can easily be misconstrued. And of course, you know, for me, it's, this is a very challenging situation, whereas that, you know, the person that influenced me most about being a public official is Anne Frank. And so I feel really strongly about the ability to stand with Jews and with Israel, but I'm also a mother, and I am heartbroken over the Palestinian children and those that are 18 and younger, 50% of the folks in Palestine and what's happening. And so I really want to be sensitive to the potential of inflammation of what can one statement lead, as we saw in Chicago yesterday. So I think I would, you know, be really sensitive to this in all cases. I mean, obviously, we all denounce Hamas and terrorism. That's an easy one. So depending on what's in there, so.
Okay. Excuse me, but we don't have any, no comments from the committee.
We have lots to do today in county government, and this is, you know, really important, too.
Supervisor Gibson.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And what Mr. Pauling is suggesting is doing something. I, too, strongly condemn the barbarity of Hamas attacks on Israel, and I stand strong with Israel and the Jewish community and believe that an appropriate response is required. At the same time, I understand the timeliness that Supervisor Paulding brings up here. And I would note also that this board has not shown great skill at crafting resolutions on these sorts of things, and I would expect that when this came back, we might face some of the same. So I'm quite supportive of the direction of issuing a press release with statements from any supervisor who would choose to make that, and I would be right there issuing the strongest condemnation. I think we might, if we go that route, suggest that those statements be available by, say, noon tomorrow, and so we can make a timely expression of the collective sense of this board.
Supervisor Arnold.
Yep. Under discussion. We can actually do both. Any one of us supervisors can go make public statements and have them published on the website here at the county. But I do think it's important, as we do with so many other things, to have a resolution. It's not written yet, so we can be sure that it's carefully crafted to say what we want it to say, but I'm definitely in favor of a resolution coming back.
Okay. So we have a motion and a second on this item, and, yeah, we, I'm sorry, we've already closed public comment. Yeah. This is part, this is a discussion on general public comment. It doesn't have, it's not a separate item. It was only discussed under general public comment. I'm sorry. So with that, I'm just going to take it to a vote, and we'll go on to the next one, because I'm certainly not in favor of violating the Brown Act again. So call the question.
Supervisor Pichon.
Yes.
Supervisor Arnold.
Yes.
Supervisor Gibson.
No.
Supervisor Ortiz Legg.
No.
Supervisor Paulding.
No.
Okay. I had one other one. We heard from a number of people.
Excuse me, as a point of order, if we might make a follow-up motion in relation to that item.
Certainly, you know, yes.
Okay. Thank you, Supervisor. I would like to make a motion that we, as a board, direct our public information officer to issue statements by noon tomorrow from any board member that would like to speak to the tragic and barbaric Hamas attacks on Israel, and that we would just include the statements of each supervisor, speaking to that effect.
Second. There's a motion and a second. Any further discussion?
Sure. I'll say that, again, I'll repeat myself, but those options are available to us all the time, that we can make individual statements, and I don't oppose that. I'll just say again, I think it's important to have a more formal resolution that goes into the record, and that's the motion that we just previously.
That was defeated.
Defeated.
Yeah. So, okay, we have a motion. We have a second. Any further discussion? Let's call the question.
Supervisor Paulding.
Yes.
Supervisor Gibson.
Yes.
Supervisor Ortiz Legg.
Yes.
Supervisor Arnold.
Yes.
Supervisor Pichon.
Yes. Okay. I'd like to make a motion now to bring back an item before the end of the month, I think at the 31st, so it's the Halloween item, which would be to discuss the COVID-19 vaccine and mask health order.
And I will second that.
Under discussion?
Absolutely. So we have a lot of people here, and many of you are healthcare professionals that took time out of your day to come and speak to us, and I want you to know that I have a copyright here. The letter, there was a letter sent out to healthcare workers and dated September 21st, I think, notifying them of the order that was put out by Dr. Bornstein. But I want you to know, and we've later discussed this and I think agreed, that maybe it wasn't, I first learned of the letter after it went out. I was called by constituents and other healthcare workers out in the field working, saying, what, what is this? And I had to say, I don't know. It wasn't discussed amongst the electeds or what I call the representatives of the people. It went out from, well, I would say the department, but actually Dr. Bornstein, who is our county health doctor, health professional. And later, again, after discussing, we agreed that probably, as a county, the elected should have been notified, at least notified. That takes me to the second point I want to make. In the letter, there's cited a code, it's a state code, that gives Dr. Bornstein the authority to do what she did. And I think we heard from her, she feels like she's acting in the best interest of all the citizens of the county. In her position, she has the authority, according to her letter, using that state code to do this. Me, I'm not a healthcare professional, but I am a representative of a lot of people in this, in this county, and I found it ironic that, so this is just me speaking here, that the order that brought many of you to the chambers today, many of you here are healthcare professionals, is a government order where one physician can mandate to other physicians and other medical professionals, you know, what, actually personally, that they have to take medication that they may not agree with and that sort of thing. Now, again, I'm not a medical professional, but after all the many years, I'm, I don't believe. believe, I think maybe we can agree, medicine has never been an exact, exact science, and people go and get second opinions often when they have an ailment, and I know that medical professionals take an oath of office. And I think it's really important, especially in a free country, that we let them do their jobs. And so this sort of thing coming out where one medical professional in this county, working as a county health doctor, can dictate to all these other medical professionals that are out there trying to treat patients in the best way they feel, or the way they feel is best, I can't, I can't agree with that approach.
Chairman Pichon, I apologize, Supervisor Arnold, but this is going a little bit beyond the brief responses to public comment.
Then lastly, I seconded the motion because I think there needs to be a discussion on political process. Government's a lot about process, and how can the electeds get, the representatives of people get involved in some of these decisions that are being made.
Supervisor Paulding.
Will you call the question? Well, maybe one brief comment, and then you might want to call the question.
Okay. Supervisor.
I'll just make a brief comment. I'll keep it brief, I promise. To say, I appreciate all the, you know, folks that came out and spoke today. I think when we look at this, you know, some of the concerns raised was that there would be a lockdown or that the health order by our health officers, some pretext for a larger lockdown or more COVID orders, and I just want to clarify, I do not support that in any way at this point in time. This is an order that's specific to healthcare workers to protect the health and safety of people in our community, given the fact that right now we are seeing this is the third-leading cause of death. So at this time, I will not be supportive of this motion.
Supervisor Gibson.
I echo that. Dr. Bornstein explained herself on the public health merits, and I don't think an item, as you suggest, would be a productive use of this board's time.
All right, we'll call the question.
Supervisor Pichon.
Yes.
Supervisor Arnold.
Yes.
Supervisor Gibson.
No.
Supervisor Ortiz-Leg.
No.
Supervisor Paulding.
No.
Okay. Public comment is now officially concluded. We're moving--